Anyone else? So are we looking to postpone this? Yep, JR?
I just, I mean, I'll say it again, I think it's, get told when they need something to tight budget, now you're talking about another fifteen thousand bucks or so to hodgepodge it together with a different system, no guarantees. This is the third time now that's been kicked down the road and we've said next time is the last time. So, you know, every time we come here, it's something else. Oh, we just talked to it today. I'm not saying you didn't, Jamie, but it's just, it's it's constantly just kicked down the road. It's been since, what, twenty, twenty-two, when did they get put up?
It's been quite a few years.
And still no, I mean, would you find out that you can do with the control boxes from the old system of seven fifty a light bulb times nineteen, which is like fourteen thousand if we're throwing that away?
I, I, once we know what we're doing, if we get to that point where we know what we're doing with the new vendor, uh, I would, my initial approach would be to try to market them by some auction.
All right, my personal thoughts on this is, you know, we, we have been waiting and waiting. I thought it would be a great idea to have these lights up and running. Uh, here, postpone the wait another week. Um, but, uh, yeah, to, to JR's point, uh, we're still in the unknown and we have, uh, multiple PLs to be discussed or multiple, uh, capital items that we discussed last week and we were all sitting here trying to figure out where we're going to get the money. So, uh, with that being said, it would probably be a waste to, uh, allow those lights to be pulled down because that money would turn out to be exactly that, a waste. So, uh, I don't know if anyone else has any comments. I don't see John wait or anything, so, uh, I'm just looking for direction from the council. We're looking to postpone another week and wait to see what's going to happen? Or are we looking to go ahead and, get motions and then vote on it later? We can always motion and vote on it and see how it goes. Anstasia?
So what, what you're going to do in the commission is next week you're just going to have somebody come down to look at it. There's no fee involved. Is there, uh, you're, that's what he's coming down for, to see what it would cost? Is that what, is that why he's coming up? And to see if they actually work?
Yeah, so we did, um, agree to purchase one set of the control boxes and then the vendor volunteered to provide some staff to assist us with the testing. So next week will cost the city was four hundred eighty-five dollars or something like that.
So, well, I'm willing to spend four hundred eighty-five dollars to see if they work, but if they don't work, um, in two weeks from now, I'm, I'm also willing to blow them down and take them down and sell them. But for four hundred eighty-five dollars to see if they're going to work, I mean, there's a lot of lights and it would probably be good if I had downtown, they did work. Right?
Possibly while we're waiting for that test, if you could investigate the resale value, what we might recoup from auction, just see what they go for on the market so you can appraise this at that when we make a decision.
I believe that that was asked two, two weeks ago and you said you believe that there was a market for that, correct?
For the actual streetlights themselves, I, I would be surprised if there's much interest. For the control boxes, um, I've, I've seen Stranger Things auction.
All right. All right. So are we looking to move this forward or no? Uh, we, like we're split here?
I would say two weeks. So we have testing next week and make a decision a week after.
All right, so we can do this. Uh, we'll postpone it for two weeks and, uh, well, pending vote.
Two weeks.
Second?
Just two weeks again.
Yeah, and then, uh, as I'm going to say, that if there's nothing, no progress, no anything, uh, there's, it's going to cost us, I mean, in all honesty, to me, if it's going to cost us, uh, another thirty grand or so, I mean, it's probably no, anyway, so.
I think you gave a relative cost, I gave.
Wasn't it like twelve thousand?
Twelve, fourteen. And then if there's no market, you're thrown away with fourteen thousand, so you're talking about twenty-eight thousand dollar swing.
All right, so here we go. President, I guess. I'll make a motion to postpone indefinitely. The second.
Second.
The second.
Whoa, 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 I thought we were two weeks.
Two weeks. We are going to wait two weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to postpone two weeks.
Yes.
Second.
Second by JR. All in favor?
All right.
Pose?
All right.
Uh, pose, JR. All right, moving on.
John can vote. If they publish his Zoom, he can vote.
Yes, he's fine as long as he's following. Uh, moving on to PL ninety-two dash twenty-five to reassign the City of Olean tree removal contract twenty twenty-five to the Decker Tree Service. Uh, we were waiting on an update from codes and for the order to remedy to clear that area.
Brennan, um, yeah, it's about a week and a half ago, I took a trip down to, uh, East Fall Road and I was walking around there and, uh, four or five neighborhood neighbors came out when they saw me there and, uh, there is wood chips piled there, still. There's old bribe logs that are piled there and I sent the email to all the council members and we got a response back from codes and codes was saying that code twelve six dash E has been satisfied. Well, code twelve six dash E is clear of all debris, wood chips and logs. If you go down there, those wood chips, logs and debris is still scattered throughout the property. Uh, other thing that pissed me off was, uh, after I sent that email, I get, I guess it made a right off somebody's cage because I got a call from the police chief, not the police chief, but police captain, uh, questioning me why I was not on East Fall Road taking pictures. And it's like, I was doing my automatic duties by going down there and trying to share the information with the fellow alderman and as far as I know, I was not on anybody's private property. I was on a gentleman, one of my constituents down there, Mr. Michelogier, and I believe it was his son's property that I was on. And so that's where the picture's been from. And so me being accused of taking pictures of private property is totally false. I think I was just down there doing my job and trying to share it with you guys so you could see what I was seeing. And when the, when the chief said that, chief, the fire chief said that, uh, code twelve six dash E was satisfied, it's like, well, I don't know what the hell he was looking at, but it's not satisfied.
Right?
And, uh, as far as I was told is that debris was called down there by, um, Decker Tree Service and there were a bunch of, uh, called that read out there and did clean it up.
Any other input on this in particular?
Well, and we did receive an email, I believe. Were you copied in? Um, Joe, you were copied in and I was, from a resident who was concerned about the cleanup and the trees and the sawdust and everything related to that. Um, and just had some concerns about, um, per their report, codes and the follow through and follow up on that. And I don't know, Joe, if there's anything you want to, to add with that, but had indicated that they had significant concerns, um, just about the tree service.
And that it had been addressed to both codes and the police and no, the, the resident felt that no action had been taken.
Well, to add to, uh, to this topic, uh, in, in the same email that Alvin and Stacey was referring to, uh, I highlighted that, uh, while he stated the, the law twelve dash six, uh, E, he also mentioned that the purpose of the law is to ensure properties are safe from hazards, not require them to be, quote unquote, aesthetically pleasing. And I've heard that term numerous times since I've been on the council, uh, when you refer to some of the houses that look like they're run down and have, uh, non-pleasing look to them, I'll say, uh, that they're not aesthetically pleasing. But the problem is there is that, uh, while it may not be aesthetically pleasing, uh, you still have the small piles of the logs there on the property. You still have the sawdust on the property. If that stuff was brought down there, uh, they should be required to, to clean it up. Uh, if we have, uh, codes that, that do not require you to clean up your properties to, to the point where, uh, you're a resident of business at that in a residential area, then I, I think there's, uh, some tightening of the code that we need to do there or, uh, try to look at some, doing something better there. Uh, so while this is satisfied for codes, it is not satisfied for me as a city resident. Apparently it's not satisfied for the ward, uh, seven, uh, council member. Uh, JR?
Um, Dave, to first one before I get on this, um, I agree with the concept of the, the cleanup, but I think you're over dramatizing what Eric Marard said in his email. He just warned that we can't go on private property. He said it appeared. So with that being said, if Decker held that down there, they did not have the proper variance to do that. And therefore I know Mr. Morgan's email included about the basement, which is separate to me, talking about Decker having the thing. Everything that Decker held down there should not be up for some random thing. It's either there or it's not there. They didn't have permission to take it there. Therefore, when it's a hundred percent cleared, then we can see about transferring the contract to them. Uh, that's just my personal opinion. I don't know what John was.
Not the first of, of constituency for, that we're talking about, are we talking about, um, Decker Tree Service did work with the City of Olean in the past that has resulted in unsatisfied service? So I, I'm, I'm, yeah.
John, it's, remember a while back when Decker used the property on East Fall in Buffalo as a dump? And they didn't have the zoning variance? It's that because it was never removed as it was ordered to be remediated.
But was that, did that have anything to do with the City of Olean or was that a private matter between the two parties?
That was where they were dumping the materials from their jobs.
And is it, was that, but, but understood, was that, was that City of, was that City of Olean property?
No, I think it's the last name, Nega, and I think they had an agreement.
Like, I, I'm still, I'm trying to wonder why we are confusing what are private matters being handled and cleaned up by codes for consideration of awarding a, a tree contract, which the City of Olean itself has a service to provide. So I'm trying to understand because some private matters are not happy or satisfied with the way something was cleaned up or not cleaned up. That sounds like that's an internal administration issue versus us considering awarding a tree contract.
I think in part, it does go back to there wasn't open, um, something open with codes and then codes saying it's closed and I guess our perception is that it doesn't appear that the work was, was done. So there was an original component, which was that there was an open, um, order for remediation within codes.
Yeah, and me personally, uh, when I think of things like this, I think of on a personal level, if I'm the resident. Uh, I, I know there's a mindset that we should be in as far as separating. I I know there's a mindset that we should be in as far as separating the city from the resident. And I was hoping that we wouldn't be on this topic for a long period of time. But when you have, we we have a contractor that the city wants to utilize. But at the same time, we have a contractor that was dissatisfactory in the services they provided. Whether it was for us as a city or if it was to whomever they did the work for, either way, they were presented with an opportunity, they had two weeks to clean up this area and they did their memory. So to me, that that tells you their mindset. So I feel the same way that Anastasia does. If we can get those areas cleaned up to where they were, then we'd be fine with awarding that. Otherwise, we just go from there. So any other questions or comments on that topic?
Fairness, you should just give it another two weeks.
And I know we were pressing for time to get these trees cut and we get this contract awarded. So despite the fact that they met codes requirement, is this something that we can go back to them and say, hey, we want it cleaned up completely? And then we can award this? Or is this something where we just put out another RFP? We'll end up wasting more time. John, you have something?
Yeah, is there a secondary, was there only one, one, one firm that applied? Or is, what's what the next highest bidder? For those next lowest bidder?
That's why everybody's got to come to the meeting. So when the previous tree contractor had an unfortunate incident. So therefore, we removed the PL, we were changing the PL to where we were no longer going with the previous veteran. And we're going to Decker, which is the only other vendor.
Maybe eventually.
Maybe, maybe, maybe not.
Maybe not, okay.
I guess I would say, if you knew that you were up for a potential contract with the city.
Exactly.
And you had something that was left undone. If it were me, I certainly would have made sure that it was spotless and it was done to everyone's satisfaction. Because that for me is a reflection on your overall work. And I I think, boy, you knew that you were potentially in a contract with the city and and you chose not to remediate completely.
Weren't we going to have the, or was that something else, James? You were going to have the RFP ready to go back out and something, wasn't that this?
I think it was this, really all I have to do is change the dates. But I haven't, you know, received direction yet to.
They they want two weeks, it goes out to RFP.
But the reason is also for them to rectify the code issue. And there we have, you know, a secondary issue, so.
That's true.
So I think you could do, in my opinion, is refuse the contract with them, go out for another RFP. And have the mayor reach out to codes and get them to go back here and make sure they're satisfied twelve six dash E.
I'm completely happy with that one as well. I mean, and how long would it, well, if you put out an RFP, then you're talking what, almost a month instead of another two weeks?
Yeah, we had to give, I mean, it's a pretty fast one. We could publish it or call for bids within two weeks, but then we still got to work through our process.
Process, so I'm I'm more trying to go with the postponement for two weeks and giving them an opportunity to clean it up.
That's what I was going to say, I don't think you should just go to RFP because then you have no leverage to actually get the job done, to actually get it cleaned up. So I would make a motion that we postpone for two weeks.
So I'll make a motion that we postpone for two weeks.
I'll second.
Pinned, seconded by pending. And that would be pending, they can get that early cleaned up.
All in favor?
All in favor? Opposed? Opposed. All right, we're going for good tonight, huh? PL ninety-four dash twenty-five, authorize a transfer of banks to Community Bank NA and authorize execution of all contracts and forms required for a set transfer. Mayor?
I'll start out and then Linda will chime in. Back a few weeks, a month or better ago, we were notified by the the bank over on First Street, Five Star, the drive thru there, that we were going to have to start taking our our money to elegy. Five Star was not going to have a presence, the main bank was not going to be here. So we started talking about this and saying, well, it's an inconvenience, this would be for us to do that. So then it wasn't, a few days later, they said, well, you will, you'll be able to bring it, still bring it to First Estate, for how long, we don't know. So we started having conversations with Community Bank. Community Bank is is a presence here, they have their main bank right here. We have obligations with the bank on on the tower, the antenna for our outbuildings. So we thought it would be a good idea to move our 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 banking to Community Banks where we we know it's going to be there. After we advised Five Star, and we did have a meeting with them, we did tell them we received no official notification from from Five Star itself other than being told over at the the drive thru. And they apologized for that, they said it was a breakdown there. And so we would like to continue, we would like to move our our banking to Community Bank. They are a bank in the city of Olean. And we still, they say that the drive thru is going to be there and I haven't had any plans of moving that. But we'd still like to go with Community Bank. Len, do you have anything else?
No, I think that should do it. The only problem we do have is they're unknown that we don't know when we're going to move on that. So the fact that they say one time, well, we're going to move down, we have to get a lot of money. Then that's not good for us, so we have to have a bank that's in town and something closer so they can walk over. Instead of, we don't have a car all the time. Sometimes the way we're using that car to do other businesses is not available all time every day. So right there should be a good fit for us and we're just asking for your permission to do so.
All right. Any questions from the council?
Make a motion, move.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, you're making a motion? So Joe, well, I heard being the first. Authorize a transfer of eighty-two thousand eight hundred eighty dollars fifty-five cents from the general fund balance to capital fund number one oh two for the vehicle replacement fund. Mayor?
This was for the tractor that the council agreed to. But we want to also think about, in talking with Len.